You think they gotta put something in there.
Right.
Yeah, I'd honestly, I'm sorry, I never been doing gun range.
As far as we know, Sean.
Like in the, I see on TV.
Right.
Shredded a one in Chanasse quite a bit.
We could pull them apart.
Yeah.
You don't hear anything.
Not even.
At least we got three of us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, we.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to call the order.
All right.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Short today, all right.
Yep. Here's our first item, uh, with our meeting is our approval of last month's meetings, uh, from what I reviewed. Seemed all fine, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for last month.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Second.
I'll second that. Oh, yeah.
Where it gets you.
Yeah, we're lopsided on the side of the desk today.
Right.
All right, and then, uh, we have no old business, I guess our new business is the request for the variance, uh, V four twenty twenty.
Here comes Sean.
Oh, all right.
We're all looking at you.
We weren't sure, but, okay, we stalled for as long as we thought possible.
Usually you're the last one here.
True. So I guess our new item, uh, for business is the, uh, V four twenty twenty-three conditional use permit, uh, C five twenty twenty-three for the indoor firing range and limited retail sales.
All right, uh, planning commissioners, I'll provide the staff report with the PowerPoint here today. Uh, so as, uh, Chair Meyer noted, uh, we're here to review conditions permit, C five twenty twenty-three and variance V four twenty twenty-three for an indoor firing range with limited retail sales, and the applicant is ATR LLC, Austin Revel, also known as Two F by C Tactical. So a little background on the mill property and building, um, that property was initially established back in eighteen ninety-six. Uh, the mill closed in twenty nineteen and was later purchased by New Prague Mill LLC, who is still the owner, um, of that property today. They've been looking for ways to reuse the property and, um, that actually, uh, formally began with a condition use permit that we had back in, uh, April that was approved by the city council for, uh, urban flea market that was located in the same portion of the building that we're looking at the, um, use here for the indoor firing range tonight. Um, that had a number of conditions for approval on it for them to, um, basically conduct their retail, um, sales there. They did not meet certain conditions such as adding bathrooms and other, uh, requirements of the building code and, uh, ultimately were not allowed to continue to operate the retail portion after April third, twenty twenty-three. And it's my understanding that their lease is ending, um, sometime after the first of the year. So that conditions permit will, uh, go away, but, um, in its place, we've got the application here tonight from ATR LLC. Uh, again, for the conditions permit, uh, that would allow the indoor firing range and limited retail sales in a ten thousand square foot area of that south warehouse portion of the building. Uh, and then, uh, probably the bigger thing to review here tonight is really the variance to be located less than one thousand feet from the nearest establishment licensed to dispense, uh, intoxicating or non-intoxicating beverages, and we'll get into that in a minute. And basically they want to just be, um, no less than five hundred feet from those. And we'll, we'll put up a map and talk about how close they are and kind of the uniqueness of the downtown area. Um, the indoor firing range is proposed to be open Monday through Saturday, nine AM to nine PM, and then closed on Sundays. So a little background information on the location here. Um, map on the left of the, uh, screen there is really, uh, showing our zoning districts in different colors. The pink purple color is our industrial district, which, uh, is, uh, the old mill. And then actually, if you go further to the south, the old, uh, Emma Crumbie's Bakery and, um, the building that contains, uh, render construction and landscaping and, uh, Connolly Plumbing are zone industrial as well as mock lumber across the street. And then you have the B one downtown business district, uh, with the nearby Bros Hotel, the bowling alley to the north, um, and obviously a number of other downtown businesses. Um, and then you've got everything west of the railroad, we've got zone B three highway commercial in that red color. So we've really got a big mixture of properties here that are commercial industrial. And then you add in the, uh, residential that we have to the, um, southeast and east of the property as well. So kind of a, a unique area, not necessarily unique to the older development of downtown, but something we don't have everywhere in New Prague. Oh, I should back up, and the photo I'm showing on the other part of the slide there is really what would be the front entrance of the building, um, if, uh, approved for the gun range. And we'll talk about some of the changes, uh, they want to do there, look at an elevation, oh, with a new front door and a new, um, little awning over that front door. And then some other parking lot improvements as well. So as I noted, I won't go over this in detail again, but as I noted, there's nearby varying zoning districts, um, with that railroad to the west. Um, it is a unique property, uh, with these unique zoning districts in such close proximity as well as residential homes. Um, and I noted earlier, the bigger issue is really being, um, our ordinance that, uh, was written back in twenty twenty-one for indoor firing ranges was written to say that they need to be a thousand feet from any, um, church, uh, school or, uh, basically bars and restaurants. We have it worded as intoxicating or non-intoxicating beverage dispensing establishments, and that's basically from three-two beer up to, you know, hard liquor, uh, as it were, but you have to be served onsite. This would not apply to an off-sale liquor store. Um, and we do note that we have West End liquor down there, but that doesn't, uh, violate the thousand foot in that area. Um, the other thing to point out, we do have a home, uh, within a hundred and fifteen feet from building wall to building wall, um, which is kitty corner to the southeast of the property. Um, if you were to look more specifically at where the indoor firing range lanes are in comparison to that home, uh, those were really located in the northern part of the building, um, internally. And it would actually be about a hundred and sixty feet from the edge of the actual shooting range wall to the wall of the home. Um, and we'll, we'll put out some photos here in a minute, so you can take a closer look at that. But I do want to point out, we don't have any, um, standard performance standard about, uh, being an X number of feet from a single family or multifamily home. I just want to point that out and we'll talk about, um, our concerns with that in a minute here. Uh, regarding the establishments that dispense, um, uh, intoxicating and non-intoxicating beverages, so again, three-two beer on up to hard alcohol. Uh, within that thousand foot, you can see the darker red line on the map on the overhead there. It's quite a ways out, uh, when you look at thousand feet from anywhere near the downtown. And we're obviously picking up, uh, five different establishments, um, including the Casey Hall, uh, the depot, which has a setup license. Um, the Rusty Spoke does not currently have a liquor license, we believe they will be applying for one shortly and had actually applied in the past and have operated with one in the past, so I just point that out just for the proximity. Strike Force Bowl, um, obviously has just a beer license and wine license there. Um, Hotel Bros, um, I believe we have just received the application for liquor at that establishment. Um, they had been operating under a catering liquor license previously, which is not issued locally, but there has been alcohol there for a number of years. Um, City Club Bar, and then finally, uh, kind of catching the corner of Choc It Up, which I understand has closed, um, as of the past, uh, couple of weeks. So, uh, that one actually really wouldn't apply at this point, but it would be likely that another liquor license would be applied for there again. Um, the inner line that we're showing on the map is the five hundred foot, uh, buffer that had been talked about. So if the variance were given to go back to the five hundred foot line, we don't have any, um, licensed liquor establishments within that five hundred foot line. So just show that for comparison purposes from the edge of the building. Uh, the applicant did provide a nice, um, letter and statement of practical difficulty, including, uh, how they would intend to operate the business. I'm not going to read through the entire letter today, but I'll provide highlights of, uh, that letter providing, uh, again, details on how the indoor firing range would, uh, operate. They plan to also have, um, the retail store that they currently operate on Main Street, uh, down on the, uh, E, uh, West End there. Um, moved into the same location with the firing range. And then there'll obviously be a, uh, training classroom and some offices in that space. And again, we'll look at the floor plan here in a minute. Um, Two F by C Tactical has been in operation, um, since two thousand nineteen as a federally licensed firearms dealer. Um, they do currently have three employees in their seven hundred and seventy square foot shop on Main Street. Uh, they really are looking to expand and, um, the biggest need that they're looking to fulfill at this, uh, establishment is obviously the indoor firing range. Um, and they point out that the closest range is about a thirty-five minute drive, um, to get to one. Uh, hardships at the location that, this is from the applicant now, uh, that they are pointing out is that the location is near downtown. And obviously you have a number of establishments that we already looked at on that map that dispense alcohol. Uh, they did look at other options, they looked at the industrial park, I had talked with Austin about, uh, a number of other locations over the past year, um, if not longer than that. Um, other buildings that had come up for sale in the industrial park, um, that didn't work out for being directly adjacent to, um, residential with no road between them. Um, and then just buying a lot in the industrial park, we do have three lots available right now and, um, basically is, uh, in his, uh, business plan, that would be cost prohibitive to build a new building and, uh, do the complete setup where he sees the building here. Um, obviously you have the structure and it's just building out the, um, inside with the, the range being the, the biggest bulk of that and then build out for bathrooms and, uh, the retail and office area. Um, the one location, or the one thing to point out about this location is that the building owner is going to help, uh, with the build out of the space, making it economically feasible. So you've got a partnership between Austin as the applicant and the building owner, uh, again, to have those two things come together to make it work. And again, um, he has pointed out that the repurposing of the mill, along with the mill owner, uh, believes that this will help, um, draw people back to the mill, um, add to the tax base to that building that's been largely, um, underutilized for a few years here since the mill closed. And again, they're, they're just trying to find uses that can, um, repurpose that property and, and put it back on the map. So regarding parking, uh, for the property, and this is something that had come up when, uh, with Urban Flea Market, um, and their retail, um, conditions permit that we had reviewed. Uh, we do require one parking space per three hundred square feet of retail. Uh, each shooting lane requires, uh, three hundred fifty, or I should say, shooting lanes require a parking space per one per three hundred fifty square feet of area. Um, each office classroom is one parking space per three hundred fifty square feet as well. And then there's a little bit of a storage area in there, um, and that's one per one thousand. So all told, they are required to provide twenty-four parking spaces for, uh, off-street parking on the property. Uh, we'll put up a map in a second here, but, um, the previously approved, uh, layout for the parking lot in the paved area that's right along Second Avenue provided for up to fifty-two paved spaces that are striped. They are also adding, uh, proposing to add two additional ADA spaces in the gravel area right in front of the, uh, building on the east side there where the new entrance will be. And, um, we would require one tree for some, uh, landscaping adjacent to that spot, but that would provide a total of fifty-four possible parking spaces there. So, uh, many more than they would be needed to actually provide, um, just to point out that parking, uh, is not limited by area. Uh, one thing to point out, and we'll get into this more with the comments from the police chief, but, uh, Minnesota statute, uh, eighty-seven A O five and then MPCA rule seventy thirty, which is really what we reference in our noise code, um, limits sound from certain uses to, uh, residential property. And in the case of the statute and the residential home being near a, a shooting range, there is a limit to not exceed as measured at the residential property line. Sixty-three decibel, uh, reading on a, a decimal, uh, reading sound device. So, um, normally that would be sixty-five feet from an industrial type use to that, uh, that area there for residential, but basically have to drop it down too for a firing range. And I think the, the rationale from what I've read in the statute and the MPCA guidelines and sound is really that there can be kind of sustained, um, on and off sounds and it can become an annoyance, so that's why there's a slightly lower threshold for that. So we did want to point that out, um, they are required per our, um, findings and conditions and our performance standards to, uh, provide soundproofing and a number of other safety measures in there, so, um, they should be able to achieve that. But I, we just want to point that out, um, that is a, a concern that we will obviously need to monitor and they'll need to be mindful of, um, if approval is granted in their build out. Another thing to point out, um, and this came from discussion with the police chief is that, uh, he is, uh, suggesting that hours be limited, uh, they had wanted to be open nine AM to nine PM, um, six days a week. Uh, police chief is suggesting that limiting hours to eight PM on the weekdays, uh, again, due to the noise and then potentially just from the proximity of people that could end up at the bar and walk to the gun range. We, we understand that the operator needs to be mindful of, you know, people that are intoxicated, whether they drive in or walk or whatnot, but that was a suggestion that, uh, the police chief had. And then additionally, um, allow that to be open later, an hour later, um, to their full request to be, uh, nine PM on Friday and Saturday. So those are just suggestions that we have, um, in the review here. Again, just putting up a map again of the location, you can see that, that one home, obviously, uh, within, uh, from building wall to the building wall of the home is a hundred and fifteen square, or a hundred and fifteen feet. Um, you do have other homes, obviously, in that vicinity there as well. Uh, regarding the parking, uh, so this is a layout that was approved for the, uh, Urban Flea Market con- conditions permit. Basically, you just would require some paint to go down on the, uh, already paved area. Uh, we had some stipulations in there previously that, uh, required that to be set back five feet from the sidewalk. It just provides a buffer for bumpers not to hang over, uh, into the sidewalk for people that are walking to and from, uh, the area. And then it provides for obviously ample, uh, movement of vehicles through there in an orderly fashion. And it maintains also, um, access to the loading dock area, which there are tenants in the, uh, warehouse area there that do use the loading bays. So, uh, it was important to leave that open. And then, whoop, we'll back up here, uh, doesn't quite show on the map here, but they are proposing two ADA spaces right up in front of the front door, um, which is great, um, for, for those that would need that. Because it's a little bit of a walk from, uh, the parking lot area there to the building, uh, so it's much more convenient to have a couple for, um, those that, uh, have lesser abilities that need that. Some general staff comments, uh, police chief, as I had noted before, his main concerns are really noise and then, um, the legal limits with those homes. We talked about that decibel level, that was from statute and, uh, MPCA, um, rules. Uh, regarding the thousand foot distance variance, um, he noted that if this were to be proposed and located in the industrial park, um, we probably wouldn't need a variance because pretty much every lot out there is at least a thousand feet, uh, from, uh, where a home would be. Uh, there's some areas out there where that wouldn't apply, um, and a couple of existing buildings, but every, all lots we have available, we wouldn't be looking at a variance there. Um, and then he also suggested limiting the hours of the operation due to the nearby homes that we talked about earlier. Um, city attorney did want to point out one thing, so we have the, uh, fact that while the gun range needs to be a thousand feet away from, per the ordinance, from any liquor licensed establishment, church or school, the same does not apply for a, uh, liquor licensed church or, um, uh, school to be less than a thousand feet from the gun range. So what you have is a situation where literally next door, uh, bar or restaurant could apply to set up and we don't have the same restriction from them to locate next to the gun range, it's simply from the gun range to be away from the other thing. So it's just kind of a unique way, but it's not a two-way street, uh, as it were in the ordinance, just kind of a quirk of that. And, um, just wanted to point that out, what it ends up doing is creating, um, a non-conformity for the indoor firing range if, um, that were to happen. And what that means is the gun range wouldn't be able to expand, um, if they ever wanted to expand further into the building without, again, amending the, uh, conditions permit or granting another variance. So do want to point that out, um, this is, uh, again, a little bit of a unique situation there. Uh, regarding the building official, he just noted that they would need to review stamped, uh, architect and engineered plans as per any other commercial, um, building plan that we would get in. And then there are some specific requirements in our, um, zoning ordinance for, uh, indoor firing range construction. Won't quote all those, but we need to have, uh, obviously assurance that the design for the range, uh, matches the caliber of bullet and ammunition that are allowed in the range versus what, um, it can handle. So we obviously don't want it designed for a certain caliber and then they allow a different one and have that issue, so. Um, typically, uh, in talking to a number of other cities, uh, it's pretty strict what they, uh, need for the build out and we have not heard of an issue where there's been a stray bullet or anything, um, leaving a range, uh, an indoor range, I should say. Um, other general staff concerns again regarding the, the granting of the variance and just, uh, general commentary again. You're within walking distance of the drinking establishments, we understand you can get in a car and head from twenty miles away and be intoxicated. Um, it just is that much more accessible at that point. Um, so I think that puts on the operator to be, um, you know, very mindful of that. Um, and then also just that one hour less of, uh, operating hours that we're suggesting midweek, um, just to try to cut down on that as well. Likely most people would probably go to the bar after the gun range, but, uh, you never know, so we just want to point that out. Uh, these plans are probably going to be really tough to read on the overhead, but the, uh, shooting range lanes are these area, I don't think you can see my pointer, but anyway, at the top of the map, you have the, uh, two range areas, uh, four la- shooting lanes in each range area. Uh, whoop, let's back up, the retail areas is southeast corner of that, uh, building, I think is about two thousand square feet, Austin, if I'm remembering right. Um, then they have, uh, classroom and a virtual reality room in the middle, um, just south of the range area there. Couple offices behind that and then a break room and bathroom, uh, and utility room area. So, um, again, they have pushed the shooting range areas as far to the north in that area as they can. Uh, the picture on the right side of the overhead there is really where they would plan to put a new, um, uh, double door for the entrance to the building along with a window and a little awning, um, that you can see on there. Um, there is a kind of a, a bigger overhead door, we'll show in a minute on a picture, that overhead door would go away. Um, and then there would be an existing service door that would remain and that would just kind of be a employee entrance and emergency exit, um, into the, with the building. So moving on to the photos here, so the photo up in the upper, uh, left-hand side of the photo there, you can see, um, basically the front of the building a- as it would be if, if the firing range were approved, uh, some gravel areas, a black truck parked there, that's, uh, roughly the area where I guess the two ADA spaces would be, um, added to that area. And then the new, um, entrance area, kind of on that blank wall. So it would actually break up that expanse of that wall a little bit with that awning and that new front door and window, um, to that area there. Um, hopefully it'd be cleaned up a little bit, you have some of the, um, materials from Urban Flea Market there and a portable bathroom that would obviously all go away, uh, with the, uh, indoor firing range, uh, going into the property. You can kind of get a better look at where the area right now in front of that building is gravel, they would have to pave that for those two ADA spaces out front. And this probably is a good photo, uh, you can see the red house off to the end of the block there. And again, the proximity of that home, um, to the corner of the building there, just want to point that out. Um, kind of taking a step back here, so that's the large open parking area you can see in that upper left-hand picture. Um, just need to put some, um, striping down on the parking lot, uh, area there. You can see the loading dock, uh, with the trailer actually sitting there, they do intend to still operate that at this time anyway, uh, for truck, uh, deliveries and unloading and loading, uh, for the warehouse uses that are going on in the building. And then moving on down the remainder of the building, there are no plans at this point for the reuse of much of that, but I know the ownership group is still actively looking for ideas to, um, you know, reuse the remainder of that property. And again, there's a lot of gravel area, but, um, as that continues to build out, there likely would be more approvals that would come in front of you guys, uh, to review that and then more, um, need for more pavement and more parking and all that. But again, for tonight, we're just looking at the very south end warehouse area for that, uh, ten thousand square foot that the, uh, indoor firing range is proposed. Couple more photos, just another view of the, uh, hundred and fifteen feet between that, uh, burgundy red home there and then the corner of the, uh, warehouse building where the gun range is proposed. Uh, looking at that photo as well, just if you're looking straight to the west here, actually, um, down, um, Second Street, or, uh, First Street, excuse me. Um, that is actually a public right of way, which goes right up to the, uh, edge of the building wall there. Um, it's not improved, obviously, at this point, just something we want to point out. Um, and then back up to that photo on the corner where, um, with the main street reconstruction, um, some, uh, landscaping and fencing was put up again to try to, try to get the whole property to, uh, blend in with the downtown a little better than it had and hopefully this can all tie together ultimately in, uh, future plans for reuse of that entire property. So ultimately with that, um, staff does recommend, uh, approval of the, um, variance, uh, to allow the indoor firing range to be less than a thousand feet from those, um, intoxicating and non-intoxicating beverage dispensaries in the downtown area and to be less than no, less than five hundred feet from them, which there currently are none within that area. Uh, would also, uh, recommend approval of the conditions permit that would allow the indoor firing range, uh, and limited retail sales in the I one light industrial zoning district at one hundred Second Avenue Southwest. We have a number of findings, I'll tread around through them as quickly as we can, uh, starting off with the variance. Uh, we do believe the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance because an indoor firing range is listed as a conditional use in the I one light industrial district, when which it's located. Uh, the requested variance would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, again, uh, the indoor firing range is a conditional use in that zoning district. The applicant would continue to use the property in a reasonable manner in that the variance is only needed, uh, for the indoor firing range to be located again less than a thousand feet from those establishments with, uh, intoxicating and non-intoxicating beverages. Just a few more findings for the variance here, uh, unique circumstances do apply to this property over which the applicant did not have control and which do not generally apply to other properties in the same district because, again, while the property is owned I one light industrial, it is in that, uh, older area of town that has a number of different uses in, uh, the area near downtown, um, as well as near residential homes, which is a common occurrence from when that property in that neighborhood was developed, um, dating, oh, you know, all the way back to eighteen ninety-six. A lot of homes I know aren't quite that old, but the mill's been there basically longer than everything else. Um, that obviously predates any zoning ordinance being established within the city, so that's why you've ended up with, um, that unique mixture in that area. Uh, the variance does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Surrounding land to the north, southwest and partially to the east are industrial or commercially zoned or used. And the outward appearance of the building will not drastically change, as I mentioned, it would add that awning, uh, window and a door, uh, to the front of the building. Actually, it'll kind of break up the, the look of that long expanse today. And then final, uh, variance finding, the variance would be the minimum variance that would be, uh, required to alleviate those practical difficulties because it would allow the indoor firing range, um, in an existing industrial building, which has existed on that site for many years and is a reuse of the property, which is more cost-effective for the applicant than building new, uh, particularly in the, uh, industrial park on route land. So now we'll get into the conditions permit questions, I'll just read through these and we'll hold questions till the end. Um, we have findings to find the conditions permit, so again, um, the, uh, indoor firing range and retail sales would not have an excessive burden on parks, schools, streets and other public facilities. Um, as it will have an off-street parking, uh, lot area, uh, to handle the traffic there. Um, it's sufficiently compatible, and we talked about this with the variance, that it's zoned I one light industrial and, uh, the building appearance will not drastically change versus what is there today. And any noise and safety concerns are and will be addressed through the design of the building and internal build out of that property. Uh, again, the building in sight will not be drastically different than what exists today, uh, with those parking improvements, the new front door, uh, really shouldn't be any less compatible, um, than the existing use, uh, and previous use of the mill, uh, property at that location. Indoor firing range and limited retail use is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city. Uh, again, as those are both, uh, conditioning uses in that light industrial district, a lot of this is repetitive, so just bear with me. Uh, indoor firing range and limited retail use, again, uh, are conditional uses, so we just kind of drive that point home that it's the appropriate zoning district for this to occur. Um, the indoor firing range and limited retail space is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan, again, because we have, uh, the I one light industrial district as zoning there. Uh, minimum use will not cause traffic hazard or congestion, we've got fifty-four off-stri- off, off-street parking spaces and, uh, that is above the minimum twenty-four stall requirement on, uh, the zoning ordinance requirements. And then finally, we have adequate utilities, roads and drainage to that property and have for a number of years. So we'll get into the conditions, this is really where the meat of the, uh, discussion probably should lie. Um, so we do want to note that this would wipe out any previous, uh, approved to condition use permits for the property and, uh, would replace it with this new one if granted. Um, all the performance standards of section seven forty-five for indoor firing ranges must be met and this covers everything from, um, air quality, sound, um, the structural engineering to make sure bullets can't leave the property. Um, again, I'm not going to read through all those, but, uh, we have an extensive list in there, uh, for s- basically safety measures and, and sound measures. Approval is in accordance with the general design and layout that we looked at here tonight, which is by the applicant's architect, Carl Grimmetts. That would be on file with the planning department. Regarding parking, this is noted with the Urban Flea Market as well. If it was ever determined that people were parking on the road rather than the parking lot, we could require the applicant to put up no parking signs on portions of the street to kind of usher people into the parking lot. And the reason for that is that road get a little narrow when there's vehicles parked there, so fire trucks and ambulances might have a hard time getting through. So we'll monitor that, should this be approved. One thing to note for the parking lot, so there's an existing curb cut, we would recommend a do-not-enter sign be placed at because we wouldn't want vehicles driving through striped parking spaces, a kind of a haphazard location there. Requiring, again, that they stripe at least 24 of the spaces. Probably better if they just striped all of them in that area that it could handle, but minimum of 24. That striped parking area should be at least five feet from the sidewalk along Second Avenue, so that we have that buffer and bumpers hanging out into the sidewalk. Just a few more conditions here to note. Requiring those two ADA parking spots right up by the front entrance, and that they should have at least one tree planted adjacent to them, kind of lessen that impact. And that's our standard parking requirement, landscaping or any way. Any sign they would like to put on the building or in front of the building just needs to meet zoning ordinance standards under a separate permit. If they had any lighting, they just need to meet the glare standards. The biggest thing we would have going on here is if they added any light to the front of the building, we just can't have it glare onto the residential property, so might have to hood it. At this point, we don't know that they're planning to do any lighting, but just be mindful of that. If they had any dumpster outside, they would just need to enclose that in an enclosed dumpster enclosure. Noting that condition regarding the MPCA and Chapter 87 A05 about the 63 decibel reading level at the adjacent residential homes must be met at all times. Again, to mitigate potential noise concerns, we are recommending from a staff level to limit operation Monday through, or Sunday through Thursday to be no later than 8:00 PM, and then Friday and Saturday could be extended to 9:00 PM. And that would be just for the indoor firing range area. Don't have a problem with the retail and the classroom area. Wax sec charges are due and owed at the time of the building permit, and that's really because the space did not have any bathrooms in it previously, so there's an increase in the water and sewer usage from warehousing as it is now to the gun range, obviously, a number more people would be in there. And then a couple of final catch-all. The applicant required to pay all legal and engineering fees, should we have any? We don't at this time, so I just want to point that out. And then requirements of all of our other city codes and federal, state, and local rules, even if they're not mentioned in here. So again, just kind of a catch-all for any other requirement that might apply. So with that, I think I've done plenty of talking here. We do require a public hearing for the agenda item tonight. If you'd like to, planning commission, have any questions for myself or the applicant, Austin? Before you get into the public hearing, you could do that, otherwise you could get right into the public hearing as well. And this is scheduled, depending on the outcome here tonight, to go to council on December 4th. So with that, I will just put up the air photo map and then just the layout that we can maybe refer to as needed for the remainder of the discussion.
I have a quick question. First of all, why would it be delayed till December 4th, and it wouldn't make Monday's meeting?
Don't have enough time to get everything together. We basically have packets done tomorrow, and there's no way we'd get everything put together.
You just can't copy this?
No, no.
The other question was the legal part. You said there wasn't any, but obviously the city attorney reviewed that.
Yeah, and that was not a question that we posed because of Austin asking it or even us. The city attorney reviews these, just pointed that out, that, hey, this is something to be mindful of.
I was just going to ask.
Well, I guess kind of on a related note would be, obviously, if we grant it and you have a gun range there would be another business coming like right next door to them like that. I don't know if we maybe want to consider changing that to prevent another business like that from locating next door to a facility or.
So right now, we don't have that? That would be something if you would want to go that route to prevent that, excuse me, from occurring, you'd have to make an ordinance amendment to do that?
That'd be more, what, city council or?
No, I'd actually start with planning commission and then move that route, yeah.
Because, I mean, that'd be one, you know, it's having an established business, and then all of a sudden having somebody else come in, and then really handicapping growth or expansion. Put, to me, puts an unfair burden on a business that was already.
And that's why the city attorney pointed that out, said it's not unusual, just note that that can happen. And that can happen, actually, with a number of cities that have just a setback from any liquor store to a school or whatever. You have another school locate closer, and then, you know, you've created a non-conformity, but through no fault of your own, mind you. You're just an existing business that happens to get handicapped that way, so, yeah, it is something that can be looked at further.
Because that's what, I don't know how fair that opinion is, but I probably feel like we should have that written in there to prevent something like a non-conforming situation. Because it would make it harder for a business to try to expand. They'd need variances and conditional use permits at that point, correct?
It would, yeah.
Which I don't know how much those cost, but.
Yeah, but that'd still be up to the city council to waive the variance.
Correct, it would be.
Right, and I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do that now, of course, but, you know, it takes a.
If you'd like to maintain the review authority, don't change it.
Right, I mean, especially with how the proximity, there's a lot of vacant lots down in downtown on that road, on Main Street, like. And if we start preventing to move into that, I mean, that's also prohibiting the local economy. You know, there's a lot of vacant lots next to Bowling Alley. We don't want to, I don't know. There's a lot to talk about there, so I guess I don't know.
Well, I suppose in a way, on the planning commission, we could always waive a variance or a conditional.
And that's exactly, yeah, that's your option to do that.
So on that note, quick, you know, with the previously approved conditional use permits are rescinded. Is that for the tenant area or the entire property?
Just for this particular location of the building, which is right now just C3, 2023, I believe it was.
Okay, okay. Because then my next question would be, well, if it was for the whole.
And then maybe I should be more specific on that?
Okay, yeah, I mean.
And we could, yeah, we could be more specific on that, specific one that had located in this portion of the building.
Well, I know one of the other, well, I know probably a concern is obviously going to be the noise aspect, and obviously, we had a former mill operating on site. I imagine they obviously had noise, you had trains coming, I guess the trains aren't necessarily them, but it is noise coming in as well as mill machinery, so. Do we know, like, if the mill, when that was in operation, had greater noise than what a gun range?
No, we don't know. I know one thing, just anecdotally, it was kind of a constant drone when it did operate. I know just from myself having, you know, worked here for almost 20 years and lived here almost as long, that when they quit operating, it was very quiet. Particularly in the downtown, or even you could hear it from City Hall. You haven't had that going on. And talking to the police chief, obviously, they do a lot of gun range training and whatnot. You know, he believes you may at times hear audible pops, but likely won't be anything that would rise to the level of exceeding what would be the decibel level, but it may be an audible thing you hear from time to time, depending on the, you know, type of ammunition and whatnot. No proof to that, it's just something he just pointed out that I would think you would hear something, but not necessarily to be a violation of anything. So I don't take that for what it is, but.
Right, yeah. It kind of wouldn't make any difference, like, if Chart were to release some of their containers.
Right, which you get.
You hear that hissing all through town, so. And I'm assuming the police would be enforcing any noise violations or would that be.
Yeah, police typically would be the ones that would respond to it initially, and then typically, Community Development Department would be brought into it to actually do the measurement. Now, we don't own a measuring device for decibel levels. We've typically borrowed from Elko New Market, and they have a nice machine due to the Elko Speedway racetrack out there that we have borrowed. Actually, they won't let us borrow it, but they'll bring it over and they'll run it for us because it's a very expensive piece of equipment. But yes, we would have to do that to monitor. The other alternative is MPCA can come down and do sound studies as well, if you run into that.
I want any questions, more questions for staff? I'll make a move to, or a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess if anyone did want to make a comment or remark, just up to the podium and name and address and then.
Name's Gary Whitis. I live at 1406 Ninth Street Southeast here in New Prague. Been a resident for 13 and a half years, so I'm a newbie. But I've been acquainted with Austin and Taylor for about the last two and a half months, and I'm now a part-time employee there. And I've found that they are probably one of the most heavily regulated businesses in the United States nowadays. And Austin holds himself and all of us to a very, very high standard. And I honestly believe this will be an asset to the community. He's taken what's a very small business and wanting to expand, and I think the city should give him the opportunity to do so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And I guess, anyone else have any thoughts or opinions or?
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Well, I do have some questions for the applicants. If you don't want to come up, I'll make you come up, you can make you come up. No, just a couple, just, just, um. I guess regarding, let's see, where do I start here? I have a couple of questions that are kind of related. When it comes to the retail portion, can you talk a little bit more about what type of retail sales, and then how does that retail sales work with and what's the relationship with 205C? You know, the gun shop there, are they the similar retail sales?
Yeah, it's going to be expanded, obviously, compared to what we have. We're talking about 2,000 square feet versus 770, I think is what we're at now. But we would continue selling guns, ammunition, personal safety equipment, whether it be, you know, eyes, ears, that kind of stuff. Cool t-shirts like the lock one I'm wearing now, that kind of stuff. We'll do some rentals as well within the range. That's the rentals don't leave the building, they stay with us. Just, that's federal regulations as far as that goes. But yeah, just expanded what we're currently doing.
Okay, okay.
We're on pace to sell about 1,000 guns this year, so we're looking to obviously expand that.
Yep, yep. And of course, you know, I circled, I'm not familiar with, obviously, the running of the business of a gun shop. You know, I, you know, I circled in our ordinance, wherever that might be here. In terms of when the store, I'm, again, you're a professional, so I'm assuming I know the answer to this, but like, you know, firearms, when they're, when they're shall not be stored on premises, on premise, when the range is closed for the business, but unless you're stored in a vault. So I'm assuming there's a vault somewhere.
This, the whole thing is going to be turned into one.
So that's how that would work? Okay.
We, right, currently, we string our stuff up, so it's got security cables that strung through every night. The handguns themselves, anything that's like easy to walk out with is secured inside lockable cabinets, all that kind of stuff. We're also going to have a secure storage facility for some of the rentals, because we'll have certain higher-class items, if you will, that you can rent, that you can't sell, you can rent and use. Those will obviously be locked up even extra on top of it all, just given the nature of those, of those type items.
Okay, okay, great, great.
There's a bunch of state regulations we have to comply even currently with to satisfy.
Right, yeah, yeah, yep. Talk a little bit about, about sound baffling and kind of what's your thoughts on the sound issue?
Well, so there's a couple of ways that it's attacked from multiple angles. So first off, this entire range portion, which is in that very top, top-hand corner, it's an eight-inch concrete-filled cinder block with concrete lid. So there's that, and then there's, there's doors going in and out, and then there's a waiting area in between those doors, so you can't just open up and open into the, into the retail space. So there's a, there's like a airlock, I guess for lack of a better word. Then it's also lined with, it's repurposed tires, actually, rubberized panels about the entire range as well to keep the sound down. So the company we're going to use, they're called Range Systems. They built Modern Sportsman in Burnsville. So very familiar, they're out of New Hope, Minnesota, very familiar with Minnesota statues, one of the reasons why we chose them. But, I mean, if you go to the Modern Sportsman right now, the ambient noise around Burnsville, you can't tell what's going on on the inside. I suspect it will be very similar to that here. It's pretty quiet. Because, I mean, I'm going to be running a retail space literally standing right next to it, and we got to be able to do that.
Right, right, and not lose your mind.
Yeah. I don't, you know, I got, oh, sure, I don't want my employees to be deaf by the time they go home, so.
Can you talk a little bit about the expected traffic and kind of how busy, you know, if, again, if even the, if we have concerns about pops throughout the day, how many pops do you think we're going to be hearing, or what's your typical traffic in there through the day, do you expect?
Well, I mean, currently, not on the level we're talking about for something like this. I mean, around count, I don't know if I could do, but I, we expect to have upwards of like 2,000 to 3,000 people come through a year.
Okay.
Now, we'll have a lot of, you know, repeats, I'm sure. Actually, I know that because we're got about this, and we got very excited customers over all this, but. Our, our hope is that with eight bays, all eight of them get rented out at least once for one hour every day. That's kind of the hope, so we at least get eight people a day. Typically speaking, at least this is personal experience, and granted, I'm a high-end shooter, so I usually shoot more ammo than the average person, but I usually take 500 rounds minimum. So kind of budgeting like that, I guess, so 500 times eight.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Somewhere roughly in there.
Yep, yep. And it's like, you know, and I know it's, and I appreciate you putting it in the multiple perspectives there, because it's like, I think also for anyone listening and, and, and for the record later, talking about noise when they're concerned about, you know, just is, some people might not know, is this a constant thing that's going to be all day, every day?
I mean, we'll obviously have busy times and slow times.
Right, of course.
I anticipate Friday, Saturday to be very heavy, and Monday through Thursday to be kind of light. That's kind of the expectations. I would, I can very comfortably say that the mill would be way, when it was operating, is going to be way louder than anything we're proposing here, so.
Yeah, yeah. And then any discussions, obviously, with partnership with the ownership group of the mill, but like, any, any conversations with, and, and I don't even know, is warehouse staff, anybody who's, is a warehouse staff? And the rest of the building, any conversations with them? I know it's in the industrial zones, they really don't have to have those conversations.
I guess I couldn't answer that, would be a question for one of the building owners. I don't know if any representative wants to answer that.
Have there been any conversations, or I guess any concerns, conversations with, with current other tenants or work or employees in the building?
They're not constantly staffing it, so.
You know, and I mean, and again, it's in, it's in the industrial zone, so it's, you know, it's, it's not a huge issue, but it's like, you know, and especially with the, with the truck docks right there, right? I'm thinking, you know, a truck driver coming in randomly, you know, his first time here, and he's hearing, I don't know, he's like, what's a gun range? I don't know if that's a concern or not, but I'm just saying, you know.
My hope is, you know, it takes him an hour alone, he'll come on over.
Okay, well, I think that's, that's all my questions. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Brown. I live at 1611 Third Street Southeast. I've only been in New Prague about three years now, so I think being a, someone who likes to go to the range and, and practice, I've been to Modern Sportsman, and in the retail area, that would be about the distance to that wall, insulated. You could have this conversation just like we're doing right now and not really be bothered by that. Because if you're around guns, when they go off, if you're inside there and you don't have your ear pads on, you're going to react. But you're not doing that in the retail space. That's my experience. And then outside the doors, you don't really hear anything. So I don't think you're going to really be hearing a lot of gunshot, gun noises, once you have this thing built. That's my thing. I think it will be good for the city, because I drive 35 miles now to go shooting. And I think there'd be a lot of people in the area that will come over here, and it'll draw people to New Prague and bring commerce over to New Prague as a result of that. So I think it'll be good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I guess one more question for the applicants. Of course, you know, hearing your employee talk about your regulations, how you uphold yourself to a great standard, can you speak a little bit about processes, procedures, training for intoxicated, possible intoxicated customers?
Yeah, like any visible signs of toxic. Yeah, like any visible signs of intoxication, you don't get to do anything, that's true even now, like if you, for instance, Dozinki days, right? A lot of people drinking, we were open, but I don't do gun sales on that day for that very reason, it's like we're, it just, it doesn't mix. I'm even talking about closing this entire thing during Dozinki weekend, just because the liability alone is high. We will train our staff, obviously, any visible sign of intoxication, there is also federal statutes, so for instance, take marijuana. That is still federally illegal to own guns and smoke marijuana, they don't, the feds don't care about state regulations. So we've been informed by the ATF, if you smell like it, you don't get, you don't get the purchase, and I.
Or fire, or can you, anything, anything, okay.
You can't be in possession of any kind of firearm or ammunition, period dot federally. And they, they enforce that fairly strictly, the feds do. So like, if, again, it's smelled or anything like that, you don't get to purchase a single thing from me. And my license, the federally firearm license is held with the ATF and the federal government, so I'm always very aware that they're always watching, so. We enforce that very strictly.
Okay, and on that note, are you, what are your thoughts, are you okay with the recommended reduced hours, earlier hours?
That, you know, honestly, that's fine, I, I, when I saw that, I was like, that's not a big deal to me. We, we just said nine AM to nine PM, because that's what the actual zoning was written, that's the time slot. Friday, Saturday, again, I'm expecting that makes sense to be open later, because it's going to be our busy time. I mean, right now, I know that after like six PM, I twiddle my thumbs on my shot mostly, and we're open until seven. So I expect we'll see quite the drop off about seven o'clock, especially on a Friday night, or like a Monday night, so that's fine with me.
Okay, okay, cool, I think I'm actually, I'm done for now, I'm done for real this time, I think. Appreciate it.
Well, I guess, was there any other people that want to make a public comment at all?
And I'll make the motion again to close the public hearing, second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. And then I'll make a motion that we approve variance V four two zero two three. For, what is it, and the conditional use permit C five dash two zero two three.
Is it one vote or two votes?
We'll do these together, because we've comboed them up into one resolution, well, it'll be one resolution for everything, so yeah, you can do this.
All right, I guess we need a, we have a second.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So December fourth, we'll give you the summary report for the council, and see you then. You're all welcome to stay if you want, but you don't have to for the rest of the meeting.
Come on, you guys can talk about complete streets and sidewalks. Sidewalks, you guys, come on.
You're very welcome. Everyone's a for it in the audience.
Yeah.
And I wasn't expecting.
Plenty of other ones were there.
There isn't a homeowner here.
Well, yeah, funny, you know, I don't want to sit up here going, does anyone not like the side?
And can we, we never receive any comments at all from any neighbor or another?
I just got one phone call today just saying what time the meeting was and where, and that's it.
Yeah, I had a few of those over the last week, wanted to know, but they, I've been to multiple gun ranges and, like he said.
Yeah.
You could stand right out in the parking lot and not hear. That, the ding 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 of the arm going down on the train at six AM was way louder.
Well, biggest, you put a brewery in there, I'd rather have a gun range there than a brewery, because that's going to create more hassle with the neighbors too, you know, at night at night with, you know, people drinking.
Or two AM.
Yeah.
Or a bar right there, yeah.
Well, plus I figured lawnmowers, oils, they carry noise too, so.
We never get complaints about lawnmowers.
Remember when I tried to stop the train whistles that went off at six in the morning when the train would cross Main Street? And you could hear it, and I live on the other end of town, and I could hear it. But unfortunately, that's like pulling teeth, you can't.
Sometimes those train conductors are just like, oh, what is it, about five fifty?
All right, you're right, we'll get into the complete streets.
So I know we've kind of wanted to talk about this topic for the past couple of months. Basically, in a nutshell, complete streets is a framework that tries to consider transportation needs in terms of not just single or just vehicles, but also pedestrians, motorists. Bicyclists, emergency vehicles, transit users and commercial vehicles. So try to have a more comprehensive view of how we want to design our transportation systems. There's a lot of Minnesota communities that have adopted a complete streets policy, and that's examples of this would be Northfield, Bloomington, Minneapolis, New Hope, Burnsville, Osseo and Hennepin County, just to name a few. As of right now, there are no cities in Scott County that have a complete streets of policy or framework, but I know there's been a couple of cities that have tried to take some steps. That are similar to a complete streets kind of policy. For instance, Shakopee has reduced their pavement widths, or has reduced their pavement widths and require sidewalks or a trail on one side of the road. And require boulevard trees and some other additions. To better understand the complete streets policy, in the packet, I've included just kind of a reference of New, New Hope's complete streets framework. I believe that one's from two thousand ten, so it is a little bit older, but it kind of shows you the bones of what that policy is. They tried to really promote the all modes on all roads, so more equitable view of transportation. To give more weight or more consideration to pedestrians, bicyclists. Rather than just focusing on vehicles all the time. And they've created some, in the packet, they have some examples of what they've done for complete streets. They've included more equitable features such as more sidewalks, bike lanes, special bus lanes, median islands, safe crossings, bump outs. And some other traffic calming improvements, and you can go through that, and there's some maps that kind of show some of that as well. And today's discussion is just kind of to see your guys' perspectives on whether we should consider kind of doing a similar thing like New Hope in creating a complete streets policy. And this would be beneficial partly, would be easier to get grant funding for transportation-related projects. But it's also a benefit to the community, especially those who don't always have a vehicle or may have some mobility issues.
Could you address real quickly, Kira, like, we're applying for a grant, for example, for Tenth Avenue project, Sean, for the mill and overlay. I think wasn't one of the questions on there directly is, do you have a complete streets policy, for example?
Yeah, so the most recent grant I'm writing for, that's the LRIP grant, Local Roadway Improvement Program, I believe. And one of the questions was if we have a complete streets policy in place, and if we don't, that's perfectly okay, but they want to see how the project relates to complete streets. In our case, we don't have one, but I wrote that basically, there's ways in which projects can also have some relation to complete streets, such as having, in our grant application, we're going to have crosswalks or suggested crosswalks. Pedestrian refuge islands, roundabout, that sort of thing. That's one way that it completes, complete streets, but I think it would have, when we submit it, it would weigh higher if we had a completes policy in place.
So I have a quick question, I, I, I like all the ideas in there, you know, boulevard trees and sidewalks, whatnot. But how behold, if we can come up with an actual policy, how beholden are we?
Yeah.
Because there could be, you know, there could be a lot of extenuating circumstances, and a good example is the width of sunset and sunrise this week, you know, and the trees that were taken down and the whatever else. And there is a lot of people that still, even though I'm for sidewalks, a lot of people that are not. I, I've heard from several people that say, why are you adding sidewalks when nobody walks, especially if you're widening a street as wide as it was? You could have two semis go side by side and still have people walking in the street without a sidewalk, and they'd be safe as kittens, but, you know, so.
Yeah, so it, it would, it would be something that, if you had the policy, depending on how you write it, but it does somewhat lock you into at least looking into the alternative, so like we've been doing, Sean, you know, we do the. Street project, bring a city engineer, and we're looking at a lot of these things anyway, we just don't have any tie back to any written policy, other than, I know in our ordinance, we have for a new street, we have requirement for at least one side of the road to have a sidewalk, that's kind of all we have right now. So you can certainly do like, like Kira mentioned, Shakopee has a few things that they have throughout their ordinance, but it's just not the complete streets policy, and I think that's been the difficult part. And I'll just say, as you move away from the Minneapolis, you know, in the suburb area, because there, there is that thought that you are required then to follow, that's not necessarily the case, but it does give it more weight as. Council and, and planning commission looking at projects go, well, it's in the policy, so then you have to find reasons why not to do it, rather than finding reasons to do it. So it is, it is a, a much more high standard to rule it out, I guess is the best way to put that. So, yeah, I was actually kind of surprised that no other city in Scott County had a complete streets policy, but I think that's why you see that.
And they're all, they're all putting in their ordinances and not just having a formal.
Yeah, and maybe being a little bit choosy on what parts they would like to do. And I think we, we bring it up more than anything, because we're going to be getting to transportation in more detail in our conference plan.
Right.
And I'll talk about where we're at in a minute here, but, so I think we just kind of wanted to flesh out on it a little bit before we come to the steering committee meeting, when we get to that point. Brandon, just so we have a little more background, like, hey, we talked about the planning commission.
Yeah. I mean, Sean, I'm kind of, you know, I'm, I'm all for the ideas, right, but I just want to be, and it, and it completely ties with. My, my personal beliefs and what we want to, what our aspirations for the city, as well as obviously, even, it's, it's now our second goal in the comp plan, it's not, it was, it was at the, it was like down farther in the first draft, it's now our, transportation is now our second goal. Or theme, I guess, in the comp plan, and it's, and, and it is multimodal transportation networks and even getting into trail systems, pedestrian spaces, so I think. Again, it's, it's the point of, I think either way, we need to look at putting more in our ordinances, I mean, at a minimum, putting more, 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 so that it lines better with the comp plan, and we get more. More weight behind it, or just a matter of how much weight do we want to put behind it with an actual policy? But again, but, and there's no like, there's no like how-to guide and requirements and what the policy looks like, it's not, like, it, it doesn't have to be written, thou shall do this, it can be, you should do this, right? It can be written however we want to write it.
But it does give it more weight being in a policy.
Right.
No question about that, it's just how comfortable are you as a recommending body and then the council, when it comes front and, you know, say, staff writes per, it's in the complete streets policy, so.
Right.
You know, you should do this, so it gives it more weight, no question about it.
Yeah, I, that's, that's the only thing that always scares me, I wonder why.
Not wanting to tie hands of, you know.
Yeah, of future councils, you know, why tie, because things change, you know? And Minneapolis is, you look at the arguments that they've had where they've created all these bike lanes, and now there's no parking, and businesses are suffering, and because they had to put bike lanes in, which are never used or rarely used, you know?
My favorite is, yeah, you put the trails in, and then the people on the bikes choose to ride their bike in the road, in the left lane, and you're like, you're not, now you're just causing a traffic jam. And there's a perfectly good trail, like Tenth Avenue, it's like, there's the trail for you.
You can drive down Seventh Street any time of the year, and people are still walking in the streets and there's sidewalks there, but I, I know, I, I, so I, I just.
And they don't use it.
I'm often leery of these things, just as, even though I agree with, I'd love the idea of boulevard trees, and I like the idea of sidewalks, and I like the idea, you know, but in certain situations, and I'll use Eighth Street Court or whatever, that we're putting a sidewalk in on.
Oh, Sixth.
One side or Sixth Street Court, a cul-de-sac. That has eight houses on it, and four of them are going to have a sidewalk, and if there's thirty people that live in there, it's ridic, you know, I mean, it just doesn't make sense in that area, but we're putting one in anyways, you know?
Well, and that's where it's like the complete, like, again, if you write a, again, I don't know if it's a policy or ordinance, but it's like, do we don't have to be, can, instead of being complete streets policy, can it be smart streets policy? Or like intelligently thought, thought through streets policy, like where it's, we want to put sidewalks where it makes sense.
Recommendation.
Not every street.
Yeah, and what.
Because we have to with a policy.
So I, I was curious to hear that it's, it doesn't really preclude us from getting any grants.
No, you, you can score higher if you, yeah, we have one, that meets the, what's the general framework, I forget what the, there was like a complete streets, something from midnight or something, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, it's not like a requirement, they just can go, oh yeah, they've adopted that general framework and ten points or whatever.
Is this the first time you've seen that on something?
I've, I've seen that before, it's kind of a common thing you see on transportation-related grants.
Okay.
We're just, as we're applying for more, we're just trying to think like, how could we score better, and we haven't heard that directly, because the grant people don't like to give you feedback directly, but city engineer has been involved in situations where he's been on committees, and they're like, yeah, if you've got one, it definitely helps you, but again. Want to take that next step, and certainly you can do other things, like you say.
Well, like to Brandon's point, yeah.
I, I want a plan, I want, because you know, ordinance is one thing, because ordinance, ordinances are handled on a project-by-project basis, and yes, this would be too, it's phased that way, we're not just going to go start tearing apart people's yards, because we want to put a sidewalk in, right? It goes along the streets projects and that sort of thing, but I want to be, but that's on a project-by-project basis, it's, it's reactive. I would like to have a plan to where, so we know, hey, if, if there are projects in this area, we want to do this. You know, be more proactive in, in planning, like a, a map, something like New Hope has, but not complete, it doesn't have to be complete, like every, every street doesn't have to have a sidewalk, but like, at least have a plan of, or an aspiration, almost like a. Like a comp plan for our streets, you know, like a comprehensive plan for our streets, just, this is what we want to do, this is our aspirations for our streets, but not like lock ourselves in, because at least it's, it gets us proactive and not just reactive, project by project. And then that's where you end up with these weird sidewalks that are disconnected, and, and, and they don't go anywhere, and you have neighborhoods that are completely disconnected, because you're building a neighborhood and there's, this, this is where my personal frustration comes on, my whole neighborhood, Takowski, is disconnected from Settlers Park. Because we have to go down.
We applied for a grant for a connection, we got denied.
Right, we, we have to go down to Tenth, and then, and then go back up to the park, right? That, that, there's an avenue that connects Takowski to the park, and my kids walk on the street every day at the park, I walked my dog today on that, on, on the street.
We're applying for that again.
Good, and, and a hu, and I was literally walking my little chihuahua, she's out in the middle of the road, and a huge Center Point Energy truck comes flying down the road, I'm like, oh gosh, she's going to get smashed, so a yank her, so it's like, a sidewalk, like, that's an example, right? Connecting neighborhoods to parks and amenities, that would be something you want to put into a plan.
So that's the thing, we do have, in our comp plan right now, we have a sidewalk plan, I wouldn't say it is to the level it should need to be at, so I think, I think this is good feedback that, you know, we can work some of these things into, hey, in the comp plan, you know, like you're saying, Brandon, it's. Goals, but then that could be a, a strategy to get there. And maybe not go the full length, but at least center mind that, there's things we could do, you know, what level do we want to take that to?
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to say, do we have police, well, go ahead, John.
No, go ahead, don't.
I was going to say, do we have like police data on, let's say, vehicle pedestrian incidences occurring, okay? So, I mean, obviously, if, if you have particular streets that have more accidents occurring with the pedestrians, I mean, for sure, we need, you know, the trails, the sidewalks, things like that, versus like. Say like the Sunset Avenue and, and the Sunset, or was it Sunrise Road over there? I mean, yeah, there's some traffic, and I, I walk my dog over there and I go, kind of take the link over to the, I forget what that park is called, that just kind of goes in the circle by Holiday over there.
Oh, Green.
Green, green, yeah, and so it's. Green, green, yeah. And so it's kind of like, most of the time, there aren't a lot of cars going down that road. But it is kind of like, I'm always more aware when I'm walking of going, okay, does this vehicle see me? I'm usually walking opposite of traffic, so I can see the whites of their eyes as there are vehicles coming at me.
Yep.
And, you know, so it's like, yeah, some of these roads probably could use sidewalks, but then other ones. I mean, I could be walking five blocks and never encounter a vehicle.
Right, I just want to be, I want to be, like, again. I, I, not be, you know, especially with the comprehensive plan and, and some of the growth numbers that they were throwing out, there's crazy, like, those numbers they were throwing out in the meeting like that. The, let's just say the growth numbers are wide, they, they vary differently, vary drag drastically depending on the source, in terms of counties or local. Or, or even MSA's analytics, but like, even looking forward, right? To your point, we can analyze the traffic and the incidents that are happening now. But do we want to wait for those to pick up as we grow? Or do we want to have a plan in the future at least for?
So, are you guys seeing?
Yeah.
This is, it's called the MINCMAT two, I don't know what acronym is for, for MINDOT. Basically, this is something they just made available to us within the past year, where we can look at crash data. And it's everything from vehicle to vehicle, to vehicle, to pedestrian, you know, that type of thing. This goes back ten years, you can, you know, query different things out of here, but I just want to show you, for example, like where we're putting the. Crossing beacon, right by Praha Village and, and that corner here. It's pop up.
It's a great tool.
Yeah, I'm gonna go home and keep, you know, I still keep myself entertained for like a couple hours.
Does it say who got in the accident?
Yeah, it does, actually.
I'm really gonna go home and get, keep myself entertained for a couple hours here.
Well, cause I mean, that particular one we're zooming in on was always the, you know, you had the senior living across the street.
Anyway, I'm trying, what I'm trying to show is it literally breaks down like, what, like the police report.
What happened?
What happened?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but we're talking pedestrian though. I'm going to guarantee you that ninety-nine percent of those are more.
You, you can query out if they're pedestrian or not, and there's actually more than you would think.
Is there? Oh, okay, because I could only think of one and that was during those Inky Weekend and there were sidewalks everywhere.
That was in there. That's one of these, yep.
Yeah, that's the only one I could think of recently.
Yeah, so I'm just pointing out, you know, depending where you look, you're going to find different things, but.
No, it's super helpful. It tells you too, like, what time of day was it? Was there snow? Was it wet? Was it dark outside? What lane were they in? Where were they merging? Where was the damage to the car? That sort of thing.
It's kind of, it, it's interesting data, is where we're going, but yeah, you can kind of use a map like this to go, yeah, where are we? Where are we getting the problems? And then to that point, you could go, oh, yeah, we should, we need to look at a different crossing at that intersection, whatever it would be.
Well, and I know that, rather, there's a couple of people and it's down to that County Road twenty-nine, just where that farm field is, just south of town. And the, the inside joke in our family is, oh, there's these people, they're seeking death again, because in the early morning. The guy, he'll have a coffee cup in his hand and he's walking with his wife and they are wearing dark clothing. It's like, come on, you know, at least they're walking so they can see cars coming, but it's like, you're not doing anything to help yourselves.
Yeah.
You know, and, and obviously there's no sidewalk there for them, it's a county road.
Does and, or can a complete, or I mean, whatever, wherever direction we go. How, does it or does it not tie into like the whole discussion around parks and trails? You know, within the comp plan, you know, we're, we're really hyper focused on that right now, in the comp plan discussions. Does, does it really, does it align or is it like, kind of like, no, we're talking streets, not, not trails? Maybe trail crossings, but not.
We'll talk about trails and all that, yeah.
Yeah, in like a, in like a policy like this, but I know the comp plan is, but I'm, I'm trying to get into like, you know, if we start, you know. Providing some more guidelines, even if it's just within ordinances or, or a looser policy or whatever around complete streets. Does that relate to, is there, is there anything that's similar for like parks and trails? Now, I guess there is, isn't there? That's what we're trying to.
Yeah, I mean, you can have, I mean, we could break it out, you could have a. Park and trail plan as a offshoot of the comp plan, you know, comp plan's, you know, five, fifty thousand feet level and then you have. Hey, we really want to work on trails and, you know, really break that down. So you can, you can do that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm seeing like, this is like one half of our transportation goal, right? Would be something like this. The other half is talking about natural resources, parks, trails, connectivity amongst those, so.
Real quickly, I, this isn't quite what I wanted, but, you know, it shows the date, it shows the time of the day, day of the week. This just showed it was a rear end accident, two vehicles involved. Was it severe? No.
Oh, interesting.
There's more information than that in there even, but, yeah, it's very, very helpful, so. So, anyway, no, we can, we can take that, and Brandon, obviously, you can kind of share with the steering committee when we meet again about. That we had this discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
But no, I think it's good feedback. Just wanted to approach the topic. We've never talked about it before at all, so.
Cool, yeah.
Okay, and I think that's a good segue into the, I did hand out everybody a copy of the draft. Brandon, you saw it obviously at the stakeholder meeting last week, but. If you've got comments, if you look through that, it's still a draft. There's still a number of things to, to edit. We actually have staff comments that. We, actually, I haven't submitted them yet to the, sending them yet. We're routing it through city staff as well and then all the boards and commissions are going to get a copy to look at, but. Patrick, you can put this in the paper. We are planning a public open house, just to throw the draft out there and see what people think. As a complete draft, nothing more, on Thursday, December seventh. And I don't have an exact time yet, Patrick, but it'll be probably in this room. Maybe at the brewery.
That'd be awesome. I don't know.
Thursday, December seventh. For sure, here's a backup, maybe there, I haven't checked if they're available. So you can just say, we're going to have an open house that night. I don't know where it's going to be. We talked about the brewery, just to even get, a lot of people don't like coming to city hall.
Doing the second during the speedo run.
Landes Plan. Just the Landes Plan, man. I'll get you a copy, Patrick. I'll send you one.
There you go.
Okay, I've got a question. So like, when it comes to, let's say, the city and the speed of residential streets, is that determined by like the state of Minnesota?
Yeah, MINDOT has a law that we have, we have, actually, we can do the traffic study or a speed study. And you have to set the speed limit at what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is on that road. Typically, I don't think we've seen any that's been like that far off post speed, but that is how you would then submit to MINDOT. Hey, we'd like to change this to anything other than, basically anything other than a thirty mile per hour unposted road where.
Got it, okay. Well, because the part that.
We haven't really dealt with that a whole lot.
Yeah, well, because I went to college in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, so I know like in their residential areas, they had a speed limit that was always twenty-five miles per hour.
And that could be a state law in Wisconsin.
And so, yeah, so that's what I'm kind of wondering is like, why does Minnesota have thirty? Because it's, it always seems like. No matter what the posted speed is, people are always going to go five over. And so I was kind of like, well, if we just made the streets twenty-five, then they're going to drive thirty and it's back to what, what you want them to do.
I think St. Paul has twenty-five, though.
Yeah, you, you can do it. There's a big to do.
I tell you, I went to Hayward, Wisconsin, as your example, two, like, three weeks ago and it's, first of all, it's a boring drive, three and a half hours of single lane highway. Three and a half hours there, but there are, you go through some towns and it's like fifteen downtown, like they're towns. I'm like, this is, this is brutal. Brutal, when you're, you're already in three hours into a three and a half hour drive and you gotta go fifteen.
So, yeah, it's, sounds like that's probably more of our Minnesota legislature that we could.
Yeah, they have loosened it up a little bit. I haven't looked into it too much, but it's not as hard as it used to be to change it.
Okay, and I mean, that's, I know provides at least more safety to bikers, pedestrians, things like that, is when. You know, that, when that speed goes down, you know, you get people looking at their phones, driving, they're not supposed to, but they do. And that's where the accidents happen.
And that's the general take is that people are going to drive, how fast they're going to drive, that's where they have the. Whatever you do a speed study at, whatever the eighty-fifth percentile of speed is, people are going is what it should be posted at. Because you can set it at ten and people are just still going to drive thirty if they feel comfortable driving thirty. That's their rationale.
Interesting.
Existing land use in this, do you have any comparisons on how we look or rank to other communities or can we get?
Oh, that's a good question, though.
But I'd like, you know, so I can see our percentage of low density residential is twenty-six percent of our acres. What's?
We can ask the consultant that.
What's Plymouth's?
Yeah, they, they had mentioned at the steering committee last week that there's some general things that they see a lot, so yeah, we can, we can get that from them.
Yeah.
I think that, I don't know if it came up that directly, but we did talk about it.
I'm just kind of curious, because I'm like, you know, we're. You know, one point nine percent total acres of high density, but I would guess Shakopee with a number of, probably way higher on medium and.
Right, yeah.
And higher, and, and I'm not saying that's.
Probably less, agriculture all developed and, yeah, it's, yeah, it's all different, yeah.
But that's what I would like to, there'd be some good comparisons of.
Sure.
Particular cities that we should try to emulate as we start to grow and get bigger.
Or it could be a leader, let him follow us.
Oh, that they didn't put, on the draft, they, they haven't put Scott County's estimation of our growth.
No, they didn't, and I know that's one thing they're gonna, I don't know how they'll address that.
We're twenty fifty, we, that just came up, like, for MSA's algorithm, something that they run, you know, we're at that fourteen six. Down to a, it looks like a low is a. A ten four, and Scott County's, what, it was like a thirty? They're projecting us to be thirty thousand by twenty fifty, yeah.
But it was.
Their way.
Off the charts for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Twenty-five years.
Yeah, it was tripled.
You never know.
They, they were kind of chuckling about it like.
Well, if Amazon comes in and builds a big thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, because what was it from the year two thousand, I think it was twenty-five hundred and then by two thousand and eight, we were up to. I think it was six thousand five hundred, so we kind of tripled.
Exponential growth, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, in that time period, we did.
To that, yeah, I moved to town, so.
Obviously, everything tempered a bit.
Yeah, it's taken a lot of acts of God to slow our growth.
Well, and that was interesting that, oh, I can't remember what's the, from the, from the, EDA, no, it's.
Brent from the.
Brent, yeah, was it Brent who was here? He was mentioning that around that it's, it's really eerie how some of these forecasts like. Are actually spot on in some of these county forecasts, but it's like people tend to like, oh, we haven't grown that much because of COVID, it's going to shrink, we're not going to get to thirty thousand by twenty fifty. But he's like, if you really look at it, they're pretty well over, you, you zoom out to that twenty-five year mark and said, and ignore the local. The, the weather and, and look at the climate, right, of these economic factors where you zoom out twenty-five, instead of paying attention to only a five year window, you zoom out. And a lot of times they're right on those projections, when you ignoring, now you have that, you have COVID, a recession, multiple recessions, but over. The growth still, he says, you know, typically he sees it, it's pretty, pretty darn accurate, but, you know.
Interesting.
I know that school board one, I know, Ken, you and I were like, these growth stats are too. They're too conservative. We should, we're going to be, you know, I think we said by twenty twenty-five, probably fifteen thousand people. So, but it was just, you know, I forget when that, that meeting stuff was, I feel like probably ten years ago.
Ten years ago, yeah.
Was it? Okay, yeah. And I mean, they were, they were spot on at this point, but. Like, I figured we'd have a big spike, you know, with, with Shakopee filled up and, and.
And we could, I mean, you just don't know. When is that going to happen? Like to Brandon's point, is that, are you going to get another jump? We've had the jump. Is there going to be another one over that twenty-five year time period? Probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, last thing, I'm not going to go over the business updates, but if you have any questions about any of that, let me know, but. Got a number of commercial projects kind of coming through the pipeline here that don't necessarily need a planning commission review, but. Activity out on the east side. I think I mentioned that at our meeting on November first, but. That's for a couple of yet to be named businesses out on that end of town, so. Got a good twenty twenty-four's smattering of projects that we'll have coming up.
Really?
Not many single family homes, though.
I don't know, man.
We've got the land, we just.
I mean, it's, it's, I couldn't imagine trying to even build right now, it's just how economically feasible is it for, even for builders right now, just.
Apparently not affecting commercial, because.
Yeah, well, keep Casey's brook up, that's, that's all I say, is keep that pizza coming.
It hasn't hit the businesses yet, but I know that banking is, you know, it, that's so fickle, you know, where. They could lend one year and then the next year, oh, it's too tight, we can't lend and, so that gets crazy.
Nope, well, when the Fed raises interest rates, what, eleven months in a row or whatever that was, three, or something like that, they just spent.
It's going to be a long haul.
Yeah.
All I know is it doesn't make it easy on the new homeowners trying to get the mortgages.
Hey, I'm just locked in on my twenty twenty-one rate. Not moving forever, apparently.
Nobody else is either.
Never leaving.
And that's the problem.
That interest rate, yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Costs you more to downsize.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Well, unless he is sold completely and then.
Right, I'm, I'm just, right, I'm just, I'm just, in it for the long haul, thirty year mortgage, I'll be. Sixty-five, I think, at that point. Sell it, live out of my, wife and I live out of a van.
Down by the river.
Your second wife?
Come on, hun, go to the van.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I think I got you beat by about ten years. Our, our house will, will have it paid off, but I'm fifty-five.
Oh, there you go, yep, yep.
Don't want it paid off, though, keep.
So it's ten, ten more years.
That's true.
No, that was, I was calling Ted, when I told my wife, I said, look, we buy the house here, and of course, we were in our late twenties, it was like.
We'll get an actual invite out, we just confirm that that worked for the consultant.
Yeah, you get some of those.
But yeah, we're just going to have it, not like a formal presentation.